I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He's gonna have you do roll call. We gotta train her how to do that.
No, that's okay. We got flaps, so we're, so we started off with an executive session earlier tonight and we're coming back from executive session. Now we're gonna roll call again, so one member is no longer here from the executive session.
So we'll call us just call them. So you just call their name and they say here and that's it.
Alright, Paige, here. Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Lamb.
Here.
Here's Dr. Davis, thank you.
Sorry.
Mr. Stavall.
Here, thank you.
Mr. Fiskus.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Emerson.
Here.
And Mr. Seela.
Here. Thank you. Um, we're gonna go, uh, right into, uh, presentations tonight and I think we have our elementary, uh, mental health.
Yeah, the home group team that highlights some of their happening in the elementary level.
Hi there, um, on behalf of the elementary student support team, we wanna thank you so much for your opportunity to share tonight. Um, there are some of us who are not here and we would also like to highlight them because they're important members of our team. Patty Arroyo joins us from Jacasa, which is now U Connect Care. Can you see me?
Okay.
Um, Lindsay Cudney is a school nurse, um, in the elementary level and Sarah Malkoban also could not be here tonight, but she's our very helpful behavioral specialist, um, UPK to grade twelve. Um, tonight we're here and we have two main goals. Our first main goal is to present, um, the student support team roles in general. And our second main goal is to show you how we have a great chance to collaborate together and how we overlap in a lot of what we do to serve our students. Um, although some of us work pre-K to twelve, our main focus tonight is going to be on the UPK to grade five because that's, that's a little of our presentation tonight. Um, and I would like you all, all of you who are here, to picture something. I'd like you to envision that you are in a marathon. And that marathon starts right now. Um, you, you're, you just start. You, you don't have any time to prepare. And, um, some of you are gonna come into that race at this lower level and you're not gonna need any help or any support. You're just gonna start that race and you're gonna run that marathon straight to the finish line without any extra support. But some of you are gonna need a little bit of extra help. You're gonna need a pat on the back, you're gonna need some encouragement, you might need some extra water or protein bar along the way to help you just get to that finish line. Some of you, that would be me, are gonna need a whole lot of support to cross that finish line. You may need somebody to come and pick you up and carry you across that finish line because, you know, I just haven't trained for that marathon and even if I did, I probably wouldn't make it. But we're gonna take that analogy and we're gonna translate it into what we do here at school. Because what we do here at school with students is exactly like a marathon. Our students start at UPK and kindergarten level and their goal is to cross that finish line of graduation. Nobody comes into kindergarten and says, oh, I don't wanna graduate, I can't, I'm not gonna do this. They all come in and they're like, this is fun, we can do this, we can graduate. But sometimes, some of our students need a little bit of extra support along the way. Sometimes, some students may need a lot of extra support along the way to finish that marathon run at graduation. But we're, again, we're gonna focus on the pre-K to grade five level today and we're gonna focus on the beginning part of that marathon. Just like there are tiered levels in a marathon, and I would need the most help to finish, there are also tiers that we help with as a student support team, um, with social emotional learning and those types of things. And for the purposes of tonight, I'm not going to read through this, but like a marathon, it's divided into three main levels. The lower level, which services the majority of our students or all of our students, offers the same supports or the same programs to everyone. It's just across the board, all students have access to that. And for the purposes of tonight, the, this highlights the counseling and the social emotional learning that's provided by everyone up here. The second tier, um, provides some support to students who might need an extra boost. On the higher level, services the least amount of students, but also gives them the most amount of support to help get through their race. Um, as, as people helping in that race, um, my job as a school psychologist primarily is on your grade two, your level two and three tier. Um, my, a lot of my job responsibility is to provide assessments, help with five oh four accommodation plans, work with CSE meetings. But my job would never be complete without the support of my teammates here because, um, none of us can get the job done alone. Um, our positions are all vital to helping our students run the race successfully here at school.
So one of the points on here that I wanted to bring up is, um, it says occasional reasons for Jordan to make a home visit, um, attendance, sign front of consent and things like that, that's typically a tier three, you would say, for a home visit. But one of the, um, great things that's happened with us working together is that my presence doesn't always have to just be a tier three, right? It's not a top level, so we'll talk about it throughout the presentation, but me being involved in the Aaron's Law presentations, the anti-bullying presentations, which is universal at tier one, um, allows me to then kind of flow to tier two and tier three and then back down. So although you would think dealing with a police officer is a tier three intervention, we've worked really hard, especially at the elementary school, um, to kind of bridge that gap so the kids can see me in a different light of just, I've done something wrong, so now I have to see. And even with home visits, we think of home visits being that tier three intervention. Um, but there's a ton of times where I may just go with, um, Melissa or one of our other counselors to speak to a kid who's maybe just struggling with some anxiety or some stuff like that and kind of, I'm that gap, right, I'm safety for the individual going with me because there, it's not our school, so we have no idea what we're going into. But also, um, providing that counseling, um, because I was a kid once and I have kids myself, so just wanted to touch on that.
Okay, so I'm gonna speak a little bit more so to the tier one curriculum that's happening and the tier one is what all students get. The great thing about having the team that we've had grow over time, I used to be the only one, first counselor ever hired over there, um, is I've seen the expansion of other people working in tier two and three. So I can focus much more on the preventative tier one and we're seeing the impact across the board and we will talk about that as well later. Um, so our SEL curriculum, second step, you can see on the top here. Um, these are the main areas that we work on, um, and those topics are hit throughout the curriculum through fifth. The lessons just look different within that. Um, the bullying prevention is also across the board. They'll speak a little bit more to collaborating on that piece, a little bit more than what I do because the bullying becomes more, um, ever-present, but I'm actually working on some bullying stuff right now with our kiddos. And the child safety is the Aaron's Law where we have to talk about safety, personal safety and whatnot. Um, and then we have our collaborative events, we have Unity Day, which was back in October, um, focusing on anti-bullying. Our Career and Hobby Day, some of you have been involved with that, so we appreciate that. Um, the monthly character traits, Lynn kinda started that up for us this year and it's been great. Um, Joe and I and Melissa and Lynn have all rotated some months here and it's been nice because we've been able to highlight some of those character traits and then have the kids do some activities. The teachers have been great with follow-through as well. Um, No Name Calling Week and then the Bake Buddy Program, Summer and I are collaborating on. Um, and we are working to get some seventh and eighth graders from over here, working with our littles in a variety of capacities, but a lot of it is kind of like TLC, it could be behavior reinforcement. There's a lot of pieces to that, we're making it more formalized program and training the kiddos and stuff like that. So that's up and coming too and admin has been very supportive of us doing that as well. So that's a lot of our tier one. And then Sarah isn't here, so I'm gonna kind of speak for her. The addition of her has been awesome in so many ways, preventatively, but also in response. Um, I knew she wasn't in the building today, she was doing the training because my name got called on the announcements. I kinda did one of these when I heard it, but it was me. Um, but we're interchangeable, which is nice, but typically she's the one that would go in the middle of a crisis situation, um, which allows me to not have to be pulled from a class or something else going on, so that's really helpful. Um, she works with the teachers, the aides, the administration, support staff, and I'm sure she probably talks to all of us once during the day. Um, preventively checks in on students, you'll see her in the morning, doing her rounds. Um, so it's not just responding in a crisis, she's preventative with all of it. We work on coming up with, um, plans for students of when we see behavior, what we do, so it's very specific. Um, she also does the, um, push-in lessons at pre-K level. Um, and it's been great working with her, getting her doing that and then having it flow into mine and then have it flow into Joe. Um, we have all, I know that Joe and Sarah are finishing their TCI training, so it's crisis, um, intervention. So that's something that we are all, you know, working on intervening and stuff, but that's a main thing for her as well. So she's a great addition to our team, so we appreciate the support in getting that role.
And if I can just expand on that for a moment too, the addition of Eric, having Sarah Malkoban on our team, um, when she creates those plans for us, for those kids that really do struggle with behavior issues, she gives us, and not just us, but our teaching staff and our specials teachers, the guidelines on how to respond to that particular child in that given moment. So it's nice because it's universal as to how we approach the needs of that child. And, you know, we're, we're meeting them on their level, but it's consistent, whether it's math, ELA, music, gym class. You know, it's, it's, it's a unified and consistent response so that it helps the child get back to where they need to be at baseline.
And one other thing that's at a more tier two, tier three level, we meet monthly with administration and our staff to look at high behavioral needs, so any of those kids that are getting a little bit more tier two or tier three. Um, we meet and look at where are our needs that we need to focus on, do we need to create new groups to fit certain kids' needs? Um, and that's been a great avenue for us to also, when we're talking about like our team up here, I'm pointing to them because they're part of the team, right? We can't do our job without them, Lynn probably hears from all of us every day. Patty need a little bit less, but we really appreciate their support as well because they're a central part.
Um, with my role, I've been down in the elementary probably for about the last eleven years. Um, and I came in to assist Sarah, uh, first started as five six counselor and then, um, was three six and now three five. Um, one of the things that we've looked at year in and year out is, you know, trying to have the philosophy of not necessarily working harder, but working smarter. And in this last year, thanks to, um, Mrs. Gagler and her scheduling committee, one of the things that they came up with was a schedule that allowed for more opportunities for myself at that level to go in and offer more programs, more lessons to the kids. And I put up here, you know, I went from having a hundred and seventy-three lessons taught last year to a projection of three hundred and thirteen this year.
That's crazy.
And it is, but if you look at it, because of the scheduling, I was going into the classrooms about twice a month. This year, it's a minimum of three times a month. And in addition to that, I'll talk a little more about that in a moment, uh, we have family meetings. A family meeting, maybe some of your kids have even talked about them. Uh, we started that up a few years ago, but we've kind of modified it this year where I bring all the third graders together. And we sit in our newly decorated cafeteria with all of our technology and we do presentations, or it might be fourth grade or fifth grade. And we started out the year focusing on bullying prevention because we figured, let's kick the year off in a positive manner. Let's try to minimize the amount of behaviors and, or negative behaviors. And it worked out very well for us, uh, we, we had presentations in September, October, November. We went into Aaron's Law, uh, in December and then we started right away with, uh, monthly meetings between now and June. We meet at the end of the month to do a child safety unit and it's a different topic every month. Um, the response has been great from the kids, uh, they look forward to it, a lot of times they'll run up, "Mr. J, do we have you today?" "No," ah, you know, I'll give them the date and time as to when we meet. Um, but it's given them an opportunity to learn, uh, common, you know, common knowledge, common phrases, they're all using the same verbiage. Um, and there is some crossover between the lessons, so it's, it's nice because it's uniform and consistent. And when the, the kids are, uh, in need of something, uh, they're reporting to us using the same language throughout, uh, throughout the day. Um, I did wanna talk briefly, I'm sorry, I, I had forgotten about Mrs. Arroyo. We, uh, do work with her and I have her in the classrooms, uh, for grades three and four. She does a Too Good For Violence Prevention Program, it's an eight-week program that she presents to the kids and we co-teach that to the, uh, to the students and it's a lot of social emotional learning. Uh, and then in fifth grade, we schedule them in the spring for, uh, Catch My Breath, which is an anti-vaping campaign, which I know has been a, an issue, so we're trying to give them some skills and give them some information prior to their transition over to the middle school. She's been a tremendous asset to the team, we've used Jacasa in the past. Um, with Patty, she loves to teach, she loves to be in the classroom, uh, she can also teach second step if necessary. Uh, so she could definitely be somebody that we, we utilize and I've had a lot of fun planning with her in addition to like second, uh, I'm sorry, Red Ribbon Week and some of our other activities. Um, as for collaboration, um, with, uh, Jordan and Melissa, we do a lot of work, um, regarding the bullying prevention program as well as our child, uh, safety units, Aaron's Law. Um, and then with them as well, I collaborate with some of the administrators, uh, Mr. Montroy, uh, Mr. Peterson, for example, will come in during our transition to middle school program, which is set up exclusively for fifth grade. Um, and they'll come in and talk about middle school. Uh, we have another session where, um, our fifth graders get to meet the incoming, or I should say their, their school counselors. So the school counselors get to meet the incoming kids along with Mrs. Hoffman. Um, Jordan and I then collaborate, have a locker day where we give the kids locks and we teach them how to, you know, open up a lock. Uh, most of the kids have never opened up a combination lock, we may take that for granted. Uh, some of the kids will stress out over it, but by the end of the class, they're usually pretty successful. And if they are struggling, I keep the locks around and they make a lunch appointment and we play games with how to open up the locks. Um, and then we finish it off with a tour of the middle school and it kind of helps with their transition. Uh, what I've noticed, uh, in kind of collecting data over the years is that typically when I pre-test the kids and survey them and ask them, "Where is your stress level at?" You're usually between eighty and eighty-five percent of the kids are acknowledging a high amount of stress about going to middle school. Um, after our four weeks and a lot of lessons and storytelling, uh, usually that number is hovering below twenty percent. So we've been able to kind of really diminish a lot of their stress and anxiety about making the move up. So, um, I think it was Maria, uh, two years ago, you had asked me at the end of my presentation like what my goal was or what my vision was for the future and I think, unfortunately I headed forward once like too quickly there. But I think what it was is, I'm involved in so much more now from year one to year three and have so much more opportunity to be present that even though I wear a uniform and walking around with a gun on my hip all day, I think the vast majority of kids view me like synonymously with the school counselors, um, Melissa, as a social work position. Someone like, they'll come and ask me, "Hey, can I talk to you about something?" And I'm thinking, "Oh, my God, what's this gonna be, like some sort of crime?" And it's like, "Hey, you know, I'm just having a problem with this one kid, can you give me some advice?", those kind of things. Um, and it took a couple of years to build rapport and get in, but now like the elementary school kids, um, I don't think they view me one hundred percent as a police officer. A lot of times I think they view me as just a member of the school staff and someone they can go to, someone they can talk to and being able to kind of do more teaching. I don't know if I could be that SRO that I, you know, I have friends that are SROs and they watch security cameras all day and that's what they do. Um, we're doing push-in lessons and talking to kids and getting involved. Like if one of us can't be there for the day, we don't miss a beat, you know? If we have an Aaron's Law presentation and for some reason, um, myself or Joe or Sarah or Melissa can't be there, um, one of us can either do the whole lesson by ourselves or we can do it two or three people. So it's, it's actually making, so the kids never lose that opportunity to see one of us and have that lesson. We don't have to reschedule anything, we kind of just forward.
And I think that, um, one of the unique things that Jordan and I kind of bring to this team is that we have both been, previous to this, in different, um, positions where we've been in people's homes in crisis, sometimes on their very worst day, and so we know what that looks like. And we know what to kind of bring, um, to this team to explain what children might go through outside of our walls and what that might, how that might impact them here. And, um, we're able to speak to family court or what that might look like for a family, what that process might be like as we might have a child going through that and how do we support them. Um, Jordan can talk to criminal court, like if a family's involved in criminal court for some reason. How that impacts the children then, because it does, we can't pretend that it doesn't. Um, so I think it's been able to kind of round us out a little bit, um, as a team and going off of what Jordan, um, and Joe talked about, just those relationship building things. Like I will, it, you know, of anything at the end of the day, I think that we can all say, the best thing that we can do is provide relationships for these children. And if that means that I'm not here and Jordan is and they can talk to him, perfect, you know? Um, it might not look the same always, but we're talking about the same things, we're using the same language and we're providing relationships to kids so that they can count on us in times of need, um, whenever, whenever they need us. Um, and to go off of the transition from fifth to sixth grade, I will say that I'm in my third year here and for sure I have sixth graders telling me, "Thank goodness that you were there when we talked about it" because I feel so much better now that I'm in sixth grade. It took a little bit to get used to it, but having that preparation and having that team, um, kind of surround them really, I think, helps a lot, so.
And that visibility of all of us working together helps the kids too where I may literally just act as a secretary for somebody else in the student support team. They might not wanna come and talk to me about a problem, but they know that if they ask me, I can get in touch with Ms. Hoffman or Sarah or, or Joe or Summer and bridge that gap. So that might have been the only moment that kid was ready to talk and if no one was available, they're not saying anything. But because there's more of us now and we're all working together, there's less of those moments where they don't feel like there's someone to talk to. Um, and then one other aspect that we can bring unique is I think I, I told you guys in my last presentation, every night, um, before I leave, I check the calls and every morning when I get in, I check the calls for any call in the Northwest Zone, which where's Oakfield, Alabama falls into. And in the morning, the first thing I do is I let the student support team know, "Hey, there was some police interaction." As much details as I can without, um, doing anything wrong, "Hey, there was some police interaction, um, this kid might be having a bad day." And how that could help, Summer is maybe she was gonna do testing that day, maybe that's not a good day for testing, you know, this kid was up all night. Or you're already working with this kid, if he's amped up, maybe he's just gonna need a break. Um, and being able to bridge that gap, that's another way I can kind of integrate myself into those conversations.
Okay, so a visual that we put together is what we're calling the circle of influence. Um, I think we are in control of the services we provide, right? We are not in control of the outcomes and the outer circle are things we definitely are not in control. The food insecurities, we know that we have, um, trauma, disabilities, family dynamics, the socioeconomic status, I know that and I've talked about. Um, we can't take those things away, but I think that our circle of influence has significantly increased and we can see the results of that in this column over here, okay? And I'm not gonna read through all those because you can read obviously, but the quality and the quantity of what we're able to do is profoundly different, um, and it has over time. And like what you keep hearing, we're seamless, okay? It just, we know we can interchange, you know, very easily. Um, so, you know, it's hard, sometimes you hear, "Well, what are you doing about this? How can we fix this?" You have to look at the outside circle, there's competing factors and, you know, if we had a magic wand, we'd be out of jobs. But, um, you know, just knowing that I do think and we have the other, you know, back this up, our circle of influence is definitely growing.
I guess to wrap things up in terms of like what do we need going forward as, as a student support team, um, it's always changing, it's always evolving. Uh, at the end of every single year, I sit down with Lynn, um, I'll sit down with Jordan and Melissa and Sarah. Um, yeah, we have Patty on board too, Summer sometimes. And we sit down and we talk about our year, coming to year review, what went well? And we talk about those things and then we say, "What could we change? What do we wanna try and do differently?" And we do that at year end and then during the summertime, we collaborate and we work on tweaking some things or maybe adding some new programs, look at different presentations that we can offer the kids. Um, from you, what we would ask is that continued support for ongoing training, allowing us the opportunity to look at some of the newer, um, programs that may be out there that maybe offer a little bit more impact, um, just to explore those things. Because obviously, we want to do the best we can for our kids. And if we can do that and create a very solid foundation for them in elementary, it sets them up for future successes as they grow older. Um, allowing us to go to BOSI's and do trainings that we have to do, uh, sometimes for our own professional development. And I guess the last thing I wanted to leave you with is being, I think I'm the second most senior member of this, of this group, okay?
Pointing fingers.
Doesn't mean older, doesn't have to show.
Oh, no, no, it doesn't mean older, it doesn't mean older, I will take that, I will take that.
Just have her there.
I did, yeah, nothing here older, nothing here grayer. But what I, in all seriousness, um, in the twenty-one years that I've been in Oakfield, Alabama, it's been my career, I've never worked anywhere else. Um, when I first started, we had three school counselors. We had an elementary counselor covering the entire building, we had a middle school counselor, we had a high school counselor, and that's where I started. Uh, I took over from our career back in two thousand and three. We had a social worker that was here for a day, day and a half tops per week. We didn't have a lot of coverage to address the needs of our students. But through the support of the Board of Education over time and, you know, constant communication with our admin team and Lynn, she's been our biggest supporter, you know, maybe there's times we haven't always agreed on things, but we have always come together for the kids, right?
We always make better decisions that way.
That's right, okay. Um, to have the team that we have now, to have a full-time social worker, to have a full-time SRO, to have the help of our school psychologists, to have a behavioral specialist. And I, it's, it's been instrumental in helping us achieve more with the kids. Sarah mentioned earlier, you know, my biggest regret was on the days I went into a classroom and taught and I'd hear the ding, I didn't, oh, please, please, no, "Mr. J, please report to the office, please call the office", and I'd have to stop teaching in order to address a student in crisis, okay? And that at that time was important, but now that we have people like Sarah Malkoban to assist us with that, it helps us address that student issue, but it allows us to also stay in the classroom and teach those vital lessons to our children. So thank you for the continued support and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I, I, um, you're my kid, uh, my kids, they have like on the calendar when Mrs. Wilkos is coming in and then Nate was always so excited to see you come again.
We're held accountable if we don't show.
But the, the, that's the tier one piece that I think is so integral, right? Like, they're on that canoe floating in the water and you are multiple hands and, and it's hard sometimes when there's only one of you to reach out and pull so many out. And, and to have this team here is so nice because they can identify each and every one of you as a resource that if the need arises, "Mr. J, you know, you, you might already be in a situation" and "Mrs. Wilkos, you might be able to do it" or it could be anybody and I think that that's huge to see what, three hundred, projected three hundred.
Projected three hundred.
That's incredible, that's incredible. Just the exposure and just the normality of seeing you and the interaction, the relationship that you were talking about. Every time they see you, you just become stronger and it's, it's, it's really amazing. It, it, it's amazing.
Thank you. I can't take the, the credit for it because it was Lynn and her committee that did the scheduling and I just looked at it and said, "Okay, I have an opening where I can go in and on those days where they don't have a second special and it's a free period where they would maybe be doing some work and I've come in and the response from the kids has been incredible." They, they've enjoyed when I've come into the classroom, but now they look forward to it. For, like I said, I get stopped in the hallway and it's like, "Hey, today's Wednesday, you coming in today?" And like, "Today's our day" and they're like, "Yippee!", and when it's not their day, they're disappointed. And that kind of instills in me that, okay, we're making a difference. You know, and I, I, I can't be thankful enough of the scheduling that we've got this year, which I hope we can maintain, you know, because I enjoy being in the classroom with kids. And having Jordan and having Melissa to assist me at my levels too is instrumental because, you know, they may not wanna talk to me about, you know, I may have a young lady, even though I'm a dad of, a father of two young girls or two older girls now, uh, they may not wanna talk to me because it's more personal. So they may go to, you know, Melissa or they may go to Sarah. Or they may have a young man that needs to talk to Mr. J about a boy issue and, you know, they'll come and talk to me so we can kind of bounce things off of each other and, like Sarah said, it is seamless, you know? And we've, we've grown, we've grown very strong in these three years and I can't wait to see where it goes down the road.
Can I jump in Luke only sample that I forgot to give? I thought it was very profound, I had a day where CPS came in and had him with a child. First of all, I was with him, the child knows me even though I don't pull the child out. He was comfortable, I can see in the interview, his social emotional intelligence, despite this child having some limitations cognitively, he was using verbiage that we have given him and taught him. He was very articulate, so there was probably one of the best interviews that I've seen and those are situations that are most crucial. So to see that happen, I was almost in tears, I'm like, this kid is going to get what he needs because he was able to articulate, use the common language and the different things that we have talked to. So, you know, when I'm looking at those moments of like, where did we see an impact? I hold on to some of those days where we hear that, so it's just a quick example.
I can speak to that kind of on the other side of it. And in my past career, having interviewed children who don't have the words to use to explain what happened to them and we're able to provide that to them. And it's just huge, it's just huge to see them using it then and knowing that hopefully that makes a difference. You know, they're going to get the help they need, so.
And they all know they're trusted adults and it's always something CPS asks at the, asks at the end, who are your trusted adults and they rattle everyone in the team off and Mrs. Gator and their teachers and others.
I don't think, oh, sorry Pete, I'm sorry. I don't think you realize how valuable the team is until you've truly had to experience, not just on the surface level, but, you know, any family could come into crisis or trauma at any time, right? So, you know, it's, it's when you're in those moments and you realize that your child has that much support at school and outlets and trusted adults. I mean, just from my own personal experience, you know, when I fell ill in 2016, you guys were right there with my own child and I still see her using the tools that you taught her to cope through those big feelings and those big emotions. So the impact that you have on kids, and I mean, that was how many years ago now? So it sticks with them, it's effective and we appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
I have to say, four years ago when I got on the school board, this has probably been the most surprising portion of our district. It's like, we started pouring resources into this, I was like, man, we are pouring a lot into this. And then you guess, I think from the outside, I don't realize the need that's really inside of our walls. And it's been great to see this team to come together. And I think before we even were four years ago with SRO, you know, for anybody that was on the board when we had SRO four years ago, just Jordan, the way you've integrated yourself into the school and just more than really what I think anybody pictured with SRO to do has been great. But I think watching this team develop over the last four years has been pretty special.
We taking off time? That was our short version.
I think there's a wheelchair outside the door for you, Mrs. Wilkows.
School counselor week last, last week.
It's last week though. I would have been nicer last week, this is one of the ones. Thank you, no seriously, thank you so much.
Thank you for all this, absolutely.
We appreciate you. We appreciate our kids seeing you.
All right, next presentation is Christine, the budget.
Yes, so I have an update. Obviously, we're just, you know, really at the beginning of our, our budget process as far as presentations is concerned. We have been meeting, obviously, as a district with, you know, the personnel, the administrative team, department supervisors and the administrators have been meeting with teachers and staff to, you know, help us build the budget. So, you know, there's been a lot of work that's been going into it up to this point in time. You know, there's, there's still more work to do, but we will, I'm just going to provide an update for you tonight on this. So tonight's topic, we're just going to really go over a rollover budget estimate. We had the expenditure assumptions, talk about our revenue estimates with state aid, the tax levy and our preliminary gap and then talk about next steps. Our 24, 25 rollover budget right now, it's reflective of all staffing and programming remaining constant. The exceptions to that would be, we do have through attrition, a reduction of one FTE at the elementary school. And we did pull out in this last round since we last presented the after-school and Saturday tutoring. As you know, that was covered by the grant, we were pulling that back into the general fund but in trying to bridge the gap that you'll see, we did pull that down out of the budget. We projected revenue expenses, obviously knowing the data that we have now and what we, you know, can reasonably anticipate at this point in time, there's still things happening. Obviously, the government's budget being one of them. And from the expense side, we really kind of trended historical data and with information from outside sources like vendors to provide estimates for determining the budget. Expenditure assumptions, this is a slide I showed you last month. A couple of the changes on here are, you know, we pulled out the, the programming or the after-school tutoring and adventure academy, the transfer to capital and, you know, further diving into that, we were able to reduce that from 450 to 405. That 305 was, the 100K was for the capital outlay and 305 is the inter, inter-fund transfer of capital for the new project. Boss purchases, we left in there at 487. So right now, for our expenditure details, I show our budget going up $1.1 million at 4.68%. As you can see, we are a people-driven business. So 63% of our budget is just salary and benefits. That increase of 1.1 is primarily driven by that. We do have some increases in BOSI's services, that's trended up over the years. I think part of that's kind of driven by last year, I didn't budget as much as I should have, so that was a little low. This year is very accurate, we really dove into, especially the tax side of the budget. There was, it's very difficult with the multiple layers coming from, what, weighing finger like BOSI's and being filtered through Genesee Valley BOSI's, it's, it's difficult to get a grasp on that. So I think Robin have a great process now. It was a, it was an educational process for the both of us, so that's great. We got a really good handle on that. And we did, you know, scrub some numbers to try and reduce some things. You notice the debt services down a little bit. And again, that was just some, some items falling off. And again, just a nice visual, you know, the two larger pieces of the pie are salaries and benefits. BOSI's and debt service are about, I want to say even, but the next largest ones. But, you know, honesty, you know, we talk about, you know, when you go to try and balance the budget and you're looking at things like, you know, well, let's just cut supplies or let's just cut equipment. When you look at it, supplies and equipment is a very small portion of our budget. It's not a large portion of the budget, so we've done what we can on it. But, you know, we can look at it some more. From a revenue, oops, apologize. From a revenue standpoint, right now, my revenue, I only show going up 1.76%. State aid is 1.69%. And we're going to dive into that a little bit deeper on the other side on the next slide. On here, I am showing you a property tax increase of $215,000 to the tax levy. It's 3.94% on the tax levy, that is the cap at this point in time. And, you know, other, other revenues to fill the budget are there. I'm diving into state aid. State aid is, is kind of complicated and convoluted and difficult to, to explain some of it. It's, formulas are kind of crazy. But our foundation aid, which is supposed to be considered unrestricted aid for the district, it's going down. We are getting an increase in our foundation aid, it's going down 0.4%. You know, overall, my state aid's 1.59% increase, but really what's driving most of that is my expense-based aid. So BOSI's aid is up, obviously in the previous expense lines I talked about, our BOSI's expenses have gone up. We've been purchasing more things that we would otherwise have purchased outside of the BOSI's line in, through BOSI's because, you know, we get aid on them. Transportation is another, that went up, that's another expense-based aid. And, you know, we have gotten out of the COVID era and our BOSI, our transportation aid has gone up, our, our transportation expenditures have gone up. But the biggest piece of it, I would, I would say is, is the loss in foundation aid and when we typically would expect, last year we were, we received a 3% increase. So that's a huge swing and it's a lot, it's a big loss to the district. One of the things driving that is, you know, changes in, you know, how the governor changes to that formula. Taking a look at the tax cap, the calculation of that, obviously with some of the scrubbing up the numbers and getting some more information, transportation aid and building aid, which impact the capital exclusion and adjustments to the, the capital exclusion, the capital expenditures, after my conversations with Maggie, our, our capital exclusion changed a little bit as well. So last month, I think we're at 3.07, this month we are at, the cap would be 3.94. So diving into that, what does that mean for taxpayers in the district? With a 3.94% tax levy and cap, you, in that first box on the top left, on a 100K house, that would be an annual increase to their tax bill of $70 on a $100,000 house. And on the right, you'll see your full value tax rates over the years. You know, I always go back to like the beginning of when we have the tax cap era, what has, what has changed with our, our tax rate? So our tax rate is, is, has gone down over the years. And again, this visual, you guys see it every year, multiple times throughout the year. The average levy through last year increase was 8.89%. With going to the cap this year, your average levy would be 1.13. An interesting thing I found, one of the services that we signed up through BOSI's was this thing called Forecast Five, which I, you saw some information on the last presentation last month, where we did like staffing counts, student enrollments, class sizes, et cetera. This is another visual that I found on there that I thought was impactful, is the, you know, tax levy per pupil by districts. And these are average needs districts within the Genesee Valley BOSI's region. So the tax levy contributes to the expenditures in the district, per kid, per student, I should say, to $7,451 for Oakfield. Another visual that I thought was a good impact was, this is your fund balance and reserves as a percent of total expenditures. We're about average. This was as of 2022, unfortunately, I don't have district, the information for the other districts. I have information on what our fund balance was at the end of 2023, but I don't have that for all the other districts and this is the data that they had in this, in this tool. So what's happened for Oakfield since this data is in 2023, we added a million to our debt service reserve, which a lot of these districts have had fund balance over these last few years with the, our funds, the SRA's funds. So I imagine other districts were in similar boat with, as us. But in 2023, 24, we're reducing by 3 million transferred. We transferred that 3 million as part of the capital project. So we reduced the capital reserve by that towards the capital project. So right now, my budget gap is $703,000. We are going back to the drawing board, looking at a lot of things. We've already scrubbed quite a bit. I do have some thoughts on feeling what we can do to fill that gap. I think, you know, we can do some fund balance, using some reserves to build that gap, to fill that gap. I think we could, while I like to caution about using fund balance for recurring expenses or reserves for recurring expenses, eventually that savings account, that reserve, those reserves run, run up. You can't do that on a continual basis. I think on a, on a one-year basis, using that, I think we have some breakage next year in salaries and staffing and we'll be able to do some more evaluation of, you know, our, our class sizes and things like that. So I think the 25, 26 year, we'll be able to get back out of that cycle. So I think we might be able to do this with a one-year, take, take some adjustments to our reserves. And I'll make, you know, I can send you guys an email about some recommendations on that and why we might want to consider that. We do have our unemployment reserve, which we don't have unemployment expenses here, we don't link people up. We will obviously try to always do any kind of staffing changes through attrition. So we, our unemployment reserve is kind of, is overfunded. I think now would be a prudent time maybe to talk about reducing that. And we could, one year, our, we have sufficient money in our reserve for our employee retirement system, that's, that would be our support staff, that, that bill. So between those two things, I think we can fill this gap. Doesn't mean we're not going to still try to sign more revenue and reduce expenses. And we're kind of hoping, and I'll get into the next steps on this. Obviously, we're going to be monitoring very, very closely the state budget development. The legislative budgets due April 1st. Comments from the, the sources that I have through ASBO and Questar state aid planning. The legislatures are in session through April 16th. Not sure, we'll have an on-time budget, but my concerns with, with all of that is we have a budget presentation and we have to approve a balanced budget on April 16th to be able to meet our deadlines for our April, our, our main vote. So, you know, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be watching it pretty closely. I think we have, I think a prudent method to go with is maybe look at the reserves and then claw back on what we allocate from the reserves instead of, you know, if we could fill that $703,000 gap with reserves, but then once we find out what we end up with is state aid, hopefully it's going up and it's not going down. I don't think it can go down. Half the districts in the state, about 350 of them, I believe, had a reduction in foundation aid and that's just, it's just not gonna, not gonna, not gonna fly. So I think there's going to be some adjustments there. Obviously, we're going to keep collaborating with staff regarding school building and department requests. John and I spent countless hours looking through them detail by detail. I do think there are some things that we left in there, being hopeful that we don't have to cut it and hopeful that state aid comes in when it is, but, but we've, you know, we really scrubbed it. We've scrubbed a lot of equipment for Jordan, he was my guinea pig, I got a lot of stuff out of him. But, you know, I, there are things that we'd still like for him to be able to get, so we're working on that. Review current year performance, obviously, you know, where we end up this year will also help me determine how much we can use from this year's fund balance to use towards next year's budget. So I'm not sure where we're going to end up there and I have some ideas, but I'd like to see that, see some other things happen for, before we make that commitment on what we use for fund balance. And right now, we've already started the process of reviewing existing POs and new requests and making sure that, that we end up on this year in a good, good decision. Next steps, obviously, March 1st, we have to submit the tax cap, tax levy limit calculation to the state. You know, I, this gets changed, it's not finalized until July. So I will, you know, at this point in time, I don't know where we can not go with one of those numbers in there to be able to submit. March 19th, we have another budget presentation. Hopefully, April 1st, we'll have a, the legislative budget and we'll be able to, if we need to, we can do a budget workshop on the 11th. if we need to, we can do a budget workshop on the 11th. And then on the 16th, we'll do the final budget presentation. The board would adopt the budget and we will, and you do approve the property caps report card. And then budget hearing and budget vote in May.
So the timing of that workshop, if you could go back to that slide before, being five days before we need to approve a budget, is that, is that enough time for us to massage and make recommendations for changes?
I'm hope, well, we won't really have, the, the issue I have and my concern is when we're going to get the...
That's just that, when do you get the funding?
It's really going to be, yeah.
Because that's now what it's contingent of the fund?
Really, the state, that state budget is going to help us really make these final decisions. I'd really like to have them, we could do it earlier, we could have multiple ones. You know, one, one thought I've always had since I've been here, one thing that we did in, in Medina is we had a, a basically a budget audit committee, which is a subcommittee of the board that we met more frequently. Something to consider if not everyone can be at a, at a session where, you know, we have a full board.
Because that's not a lockdown date, April 1st, right? That's a projected.
That's projected and...
Because that's fluctuated with the last couple of years, right?
That is, that is supposedly the deadline, but...
So, so, you know, I'll, I'll just throw this out there. I'm, I'm, I'm optimistic that this proposed budget by the governor is, is not going to stick. I think it has detrimental effects to the majority of the school districts in, in this state. On that note, I don't think we're going to know by April 1st. We met today and like I said, we're optimistic that, you know, things will, will come through. But if they do, it's going to be on that April 1st date, so it's kind of a...
But like the logic behind that reduction or, or, or lack of increase is the idea that our numbers are dropping, right? But if you were to watch that presentation that we just had and listen to what the counselors were just saying, Sarah was a body of one not too long ago when our numbers of students were much higher, even still though.
Student needs.
The needs have increased dramatically and that's evidence of, of why we need that funding is to be able to support those students.
Right. You're free and reduced lunch percentages, and again, I think we presented on it last month. You see that those percentages have gone up over the years and that's an indicator of, you know, social...
Socioeconomic.
Socioeconomic needs of, of the students. And I think we, you know, you guys are more the educators and, and the finance and numbers person, but, you know, you know, and they, you can tell, they can tell you, the needs of the students have gone dramatically up and...
You're right.
You know, and I've said this to the board before, you know, your enrollment drops, you lose 10 or 15 kids. You know, that doesn't equate to a teacher, that doesn't equate to a social worker. It doesn't, by losing 20 or 25 or let's say 50 kids, you know, it doesn't make our campus more safer. I don't need a SRO. And then, of course, you know, you throw on the mandates, all the mental health. And, and like I had said in, 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 you know, our workshop today, the amount of things that we now do as a school district, you know, the feeding, the clothing, all the resources that we have, you know, how, how, how do you base that on, you know, losing, you know, a group of kids? It just, it doesn't equate. And for the governor to, to put out there that, you know, well, why are we funding kids that don't exist? Is, is not, is not the picture. And, and we ask for the research behind this calculation. What does it cost a district like ours to educate a child? The formula's not right and, and this is, this is what happens. And, and again, this is not an Oakfield issue, this is, this is a, this is a major school district issue. And, you know, to sit here and say that, you know, we have this gap, you know, how, it's almost like you're just ripping the resources away from us. And, and you can't do that because we have come so far and there's going to be more of a need, not less. And that's why we're all very frustrated with this. And like I said, we're optimistic that, that this budget will change. But, you know, I was told the same, you know, this morning in our group that they're in session through April 16th and they don't really have any sort of urgency. You would think that they would line up the calendar, I mean, they have no sense of urgency if they are going to change something to have it done by April 1st, which puts us really in a bind. So at that point, we'll just go with the numbers that we have and, and we'll kind of come up with a safety net that if, you know, something is released and the numbers are different, that we can modify it, but...
So the state is allowed lenience on their deadline, but we're not, is what you're saying? So they can say they're going to have it by April 1st, but April 1st could quickly turn into April 10th and we still have to have this done by the 16th?
Correct.
Right.
And it's, and it's been that way, right? I mean, we've often times been faced with having to put together a budget without having numbers, you know, from the state. And this time, maybe it's a bit more ominous with, you know, what they're looking to do with foundation aid to express the unpopular opinion. So when we went back to the capital project and we had our meeting down the elementary school, we were able to make this work about a tax levy increase in the single proposal, we decided that we would devote operational dollars to that. And I, I think we always qualified that with, we can pull that back if things get ugly. So I guess I'll just say, you know, that's still available to us, right? To scale that project back if...
So you have to be cautious, obviously, because you presented to the, the voters a project that had certain characteristics to it. If you significantly change scope on what the voters approve, because we reached out to legal to ask this question, we just would caution that we have to be conscious of that and how we, how we do that. That's why, you know, I reached out to Maggie and we took that $450,000 capital transfer to capital it down to 305, understanding that those expenditures generate aid. So without those expenditures, your aid goes down, okay? So that's why, like, we do the capital outlay project that very next year. I've got $91,400 or $93,000 coming in for it. So that first year, when you start doing your capital outlays, that first year, you got $100,000 with no revenue associated with it. But every year after that, you get it that subsequent year. So now we're in the sweet spot where we're able to keep going with that. So the idea with our, our capital out, or with our capital expenditures is very, very similar is you want to keep that expense the same with, with your revenue. We, we could if we need to. I don't think we're going to need to, I really don't think we're going to need to. I, I think we're going to be able to make that work.
So in that discussion that we had that day, we also were hopeful not to have to do more than 1% or 2%, certainly not going up to the limit of the tax cap. Is that where we're thinking we're going to be, is we're going to, we're going to need to be that? And we're still $700,000?
Well, and here's the problem, you know, that conversation when, I mean, all, all the school districts are dealing with it right now, you know, I, I would like to say, yeah, but with this, this governor's proposal, this was not something that we thought was coming. If you keep in mind, it took them 15 years to right-size us and, and fully fund all these districts and now they want to pull back in one year.
Well, it's a double pullback because our funds add up.
Right, and so it's like, basically, we're saying, you know, there's, there's a healthy balance here. You gotta, you gotta, you just can't all of a sudden hit us like this. The other concern is, I think, you have to be careful with your operational budget and like your capital budget. So we, we do invest a lot of money because if something goes wrong here in the buildings, and that's why everybody has a, you know, a BCS every five years and all these capital projects are happening, is because you can't sustain a district solely on taxpayers' money because it's, it's one for one. We blow an air handling unit and it's $100,000, we're taxing the, we're taxing everybody 2%. So people may say, well, yeah, they went out at 0% with this capital project, now they're going to raise their taxes 1%, 2% or 3%. It's different buckets. This is more of an operational cost where we're investing money into our building condition survey, which this work needs to be done. The amount of work that needs to be done on a roof or, you know, a, a pool or, you know, the slab work, all of that, you can't have that one for one. You know, and if something goes wrong, we're just turning around every time and saying the taxpayer has to pay for it. So it's, it's, it's a little different in that sense because really the capital part of it, we get about ninefold. For every dollar we spend, we get, you know, $9 back from the state. And that's how you're able to sustain a district. Otherwise, you know, you don't want to go out to the taxpayers. So you're right, your conversation was, it's a lot different now based on what the governor has proposed, but, you know, we're just going to have to wait and see.
And the other thing you have to remember is, you know, you mentioned the 2% and coming to a balance, you're not at, you're not at 2%. You were at 0.89 over the years, you've not kept it at 2%. You've gone zero, you've gone, you did a negative tax levy in, in 16, 17. So you're at, you've averaged 0.89, we've not kept it at 2%. And I know that that 2%, I know it sounds like 2% your cap. You guys know that 2% is, is not, I actually put a link to a video on our, on our website for people can kind of understand it. 2% doesn't mean 2% on your, on your tax levy. You see this calculation, it's just so fun, right?
So when I said that 2%, I was referring to the common budget I was referring to.
Right, yeah.
Something historically that we've done.
Right, right.
I, I think we just, we need to be flexible. Absolutely, we got hit with something that we didn't realize we were going to get hit with that day that we were sitting in that elementary school cafeteria and we put all this together. I agree with you that, that we know that, you know, there's, there's one party that will negotiate this budget and it's the Democrats and they're generally education friendly. So yes, our governor has made a proposal, but it'll get pulled back from there. How much, I guess we'll see.
Right, yeah, and I, like I said, I think there's some combination of things that we can do. And I think we can, I, I, that number might look ominous, but I do think that we can, we can get us through this year. This is also a year, obviously, where we're getting hit with the, you know, reduction and the, the federal stimulus monies, that's going away and a lot, you know, while we had slowly started putting some of those salaries back into the general fund over, over that course of the time, we, you know, are pulling back the rest of those this year. We also had to contract settle this year a little higher than, you know, we initially budgeted even for, for this fiscal year. So, you know, I think once we weather this first year, I think we'll, I think we're going to be okay. I don't think that that gap is going to be as, as big, I think, I don't think it's unfillable. And I do think that we have planned for '25, '26 and, and talking, you know, with the administrative team, you know, and where we can restructure something at that time. So I think it's sustainable, I think we just have to bridge this one-year gap.
I think for that workshop, my suggestion would be March, realizing that we're, you're going to have incomplete information, but as a board, if we truly want to feel like we're influencing, you know, this budget, it needs to be earlier than April 11th.
Yep, and we can, you know, one of the things I, and some of you have been there for, for previous budget workshops, one of the nice things about it is I, you know me, I'll pull up the spreadsheets and we will play with numbers and say, if I, you know, pulled this out, what is the impact on the tax levy? If I put this back in, we increase this, decrease that and how that affects it. It's very, you know, it's very useful and we can dive deep into some of the expense lines. So I'm not opposed to doing, doing them. I, I do believe, you know, I do believe in full transparency and...
Yeah, well, we've done it before, we can do it again.
And I'm going to say, Matt, to your point, you know, I am, I'm going to be away from the district the week before, obviously, the district has spring break. And if there's a timeline where April 1st is supposed to be when the budget's released, Tuesday's April 2nd, you know, that's after, you know, the spring break, right? Are we off?
I think that is spring break.
Or that is spring, that's Tuesday, 8th?
Yeah, it's March 29th.
That's probably where that gap comes in, right? So we're on spring break, I'm up until the 9th, so it would have to potentially be the week of the 25th of March or earlier.
And that's when you're not...
And that's when I'm not here.
So maybe the week of March 18th?
We could certainly do that.
When is our board meeting?
Our board meeting's on the 19th.
I was just going to say, it's got to be right there, yeah.
Is that too big of a night?
Well, if there's another night in the week that we're...
I was going to say, or is that something you want to meet beforehand?
Do you want to do like a...
Can do a budget workshop beforehand?
Or we could do it on another day.
Let's get back to you on that.
Okay, yeah, we'll try and know you're, we'll try and know you're not some dates in March.
We've got to look at some calendars and go from there, but you're right. I mean, I, I don't remember that we had too many workshops last year, the previous years we had at least, at least one if not two, I don't recall.
We've been, we've been lucky that our budget has come together, you know, fairly...
He's, no, that's...
Obviously, it's a tough word to use, but it's, it's come together. And this, this year is going to be a little tougher, right? Might be a little more contentious.
Yep.
You walk through a little bit, just, so we're going to cut that Saturday support. I understand that none of this is easy to do, but kind of the thought behind that, maybe even the, the savings on that or where we're at with that, I feel like that's something we've really highlighted here the last couple of years is like how much that technically helped our kids. And now we're going to cut it, so is that like a, you know, is that something like, we feel like that was something coming out of COVID where we needed additional support and now we're kind of at that point where the kids don't need that? Or I just feel like we've kind of gone from like highlighting that program to, to, to now unfortunately having to make a, a cut on that. So I'm just kind of curious.
So one of...
Go ahead, please.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
One of the things that we were thinking about when we were looking at, at, at things that we were cutting is the extra stuff that we added or non-mandated type things. We're obviously, you know, there are other things that could be, could be cut. We, you know, are pretty generous in terms of, you know, our transportation of, of students for extracurriculars and things like that. Typically, those types of things would be where you, you cut. So say, for example, you, you go to a, if you ever went to a contingent budget, you know, there'd be no use of facilities, you know, brought by outs, by outside groups, you know, so there would be no fitness center, there'd be no community use of the pool, those kind of things. Extra trips, no field trips, there'd be that kind of stuff. The, that we didn't dive into, we did, but the after-school stuff that we did turn, dive into. But maybe that is a swap that the board would want to consider, like, is that something you want to keep? But we just changed something else. So I don't, there's obviously...
Right, yeah, I understand that's all, none of it's easy. But I just wondered like, have we actually seen something in that where we're like, oh, the kids, you know, that was a COVID thing and now the kids don't, you know, we only have two kids showing up on Saturday compared to where we used to have 10, you know?
Anything from the other administrators on the benefit side?
Yep.
Last time I was at a Saturday tutoring, it was about 15 kids that were there. So we've had some big ups and flows depending on where in the quarter you are, but we have had some good turnout. Same thing with after-school tutoring, it has some flows, there are days where there's 20 kids in there and there's days where there's 10.
So we haven't really seen a change in the, the need for it. It was, it's really right, right now is the financial decision right now.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think like Christine said, you know, number one, you want to look at, you know, you start with all your non-mandated, your, and I don't want to say this in the wrong terms of, you know, the extras, but, you know, stuff like that. And it does add up. I mean, if, if, if the community were to kind of do the math and figure out, you know, a lifeguard for two hours, six hours a week, you know, that the, that the pool is open, which we, we love to have the community here, you know, we are, it, it does add up to have that fitness center open for an hour after school for all our kids, Monday through Friday, have it open on Tuesday, Thursdays and Saturday mornings for two hours, you know, times 30 or 35 bucks an hour that we're paying someone to do it. You know, it adds up. And those are the things that we just try to drill down and, and, you know, put off and, and, you know, I'm not saying that we're, that we're cutting it, but those are the things that come to the forefront because you, you, it can't be, you know, certainly clubs and activities and sports and programs and, and people. You certainly don't want to even talk about that. So it's those types of things that we just unfortunately have to, have to look at and, you know... So it's those types of things that we just unfortunately have to, have to look at and, you know, put on, put on the side.
And that's something that was brought on by the ARPO money and it makes sense because ARPO money goes away, but you're right.
Yeah, I understand where, where it came from, but it was like, it's something that we've showcased and really pushed out there and we've been very proud of.
Absolutely.
And that, uh, see that one on the list, kinda hurts a little bit. I know it wasn't a decision made easily, but I think it's something that we really should kinda dive into.
And could, there could also be considerations for modifying the amount of time that it's offered, like, instead of cutting it completely, maybe every other week it's offered instead.
Right.
Of completely eliminating it, so you'll provide us with, at the workshop, a menu, if you will, of, of items that.
Yes, if there's something in particular you guys wanna look at, you want me to dive into numbers and do some, some calculations, like, you know, what's the cost of this program, what's the cost of providing this service or that service? Let me know, give me some time to prepare and I can get the research done, you know, you know, talk to, you know, my staff and, and have them pull some information as well, and we can put that together and be prepared to talk about, you know, some of those numbers. Absolutely, but feel free to let me know if there's something in particular that you wanna talk about.
Yeah, I think just comparing stuff like that, I mean, personally, like, if we have that many kids using that support, it might not be a popular vote, but I'd say close the pool, you know? To me, we're here for academics first and foremost, and if that program's really helped our, our kids that much, I hate to say it, but, you know, I think that's a priority.
Let's not get crazy here, let's, let's not, let's leave.
Yeah, hopefully we don't have to do either one.
Yeah, that's.
No, wait a second here.
There's a lot of other creativity.
Yeah.
Adventure, yeah.
Uh, anything else for Christine there? Any more doom and gloom for Mr. Liam?
It's not doom and gloom, we're, we're, we're gonna be good.
No, I'm teasing, no, I did.
I think that it's important to notate from a board's perspective to the community and also to the district at large that we recognize, even with this presentation tonight, that the needs, the social emotional needs of our students is increasing. We might lose twenty kids, again, sprinkled throughout the district, but the needs are continuing to grow and we are in a people business. Artificial intelligence cannot do what humans do amongst these walls, so I think it's important that everyone realizes, like, we're not looking to do more with less. We recognize that we need solid educators here to do the hard work day in and day out. And I think that that's all of our priority here.
And we have to look at our options, you know, once we're faced with this, you know, what are we going to get in aid, then we really have to, and you guys have done all the legwork ahead of time. You know, you know, we may ask question, what's a bus run cost, right, for page turns, or, but you know, what are, what are those hidden costs that we don't necessarily see? And then go from there, but that's the worst-case scenario based on what we get our, from our final budget run there. So it's, right now, I think we're being proactive, scrubbing what we can scrub, and then moving forward to say, well, what are absolutes that we truly believe in as our district? And RTI supports, uh, uh, you know, all of the, the Saturdays that we've seen be so beneficial, those are things that we really believe in, and what else can we continue to do? You know, if we have, if we have, uh, what's being projected to us right now, so, um, yeah, right, it's gonna be probably some tough conversations that aren't so cheery. Christine, thank you for being so out of this, this is, this is great. All right, um, on to the approval of minutes, be it resolved at the minutes of January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting, be approved.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Liam.
I'll second, yeah.
Um, any discussion? Did you catch that, these guys are fast down there.
She's, we should, oh, listen to the recording and do the minutes.
Okay, so you're, you're, okay, all right.
So just make sure it's clear.
Yeah, so, yep, okay, uh, no discussion, I, I don't, there's any discussion, I'm sorry.
No, sir.
Uh, thank you, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Were there any visitor requests on? Okay, uh, on to the approval of warrants, be it resolved at after an audit of the bills, payment of the warrants, and internal claims, our reports should be approved, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Liam, uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Matt, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Uh, six point two treasurer's report, be it resolved at the treasurer's report for December twenty twenty-three, be approved, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Maria, uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Pete, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, second reading here.
So these are the five remaining policies from the last board meeting, um, again, they've been updated, um, a couple of them have new forms that we updated. Really, um, this was just to kind of collaborate and be in compliance with the workplace violence policy that the board approved last month. I have not made any changes to these. It's the anti-harassment, sexual harassment, Title IX and sex discrimination, um, and, uh, thing would be for all students act.
When we look at these and we, and we have, um, it just seems like they've been updated and aligned to the policy that we passed last board meeting, is there any?
Yep, um, just to give the board a heads up, that the Title IX compliance officers are Christine and I, um, you have to be annually, um, trained and, and certified in this, which we have done this year. And like I said, the other ones, um, just been updated and a couple of them have new reporting forms, um, that are on our website, or will be on our website.
In current language.
Correct.
That was some of the, some of the, it's extraordinarily outdated, I think it goes back to policy six.
Correct.
I think, grievance against students.
Complaints and grievances by students.
Yeah, that's crazy. Is there anything in any one of these policies that we'd like to kinda pull out or discuss? Natalie, I know you would, you would have some questions pretty early.
Well, I had, I had questioned about the dress code, I didn't know, that would be six one two one.
Six one two one, okay.
Yeah, I, I had pulled up some bullet points on that one, uh, do we need to add in the examples that are present? Um, it seems excessive, maybe end with just gender roles.
Dress, I'm sorry, I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll go slower.
Yeah, were you looking?
Page four, page four.
Sixty-one, oh, we got the old one.
Sixty-one twenty-one.
Then, so the new one, draft two.
Page four?
Is there a page four?
Yeah, there is.
Page four fourteen?
Yep, so looking at.
Okay.
The sentence with gender roles.
So mine is sexual harassment in the workplace, are we looking at?
This is.
Yeah, sexual harassment in the workplace.
Which, six one, I have them up. But it's been page four. I don't see that, is it two? I'm sorry. I had it written down in my notes section.
Hang on, maybe my search was. Maybe nondiscrimination is on there?
I think it was under the, um, section D, sex stereotyping.
First sixty-one twenty-one and stuff.
So, yep, so just the example, um, ending it at gender roles, I didn't know if we needed the such example, um, such as asking a woman to serve meeting, to serve a meeting with refreshments when it is not part of or appropriate to her job duties. I didn't hope we needed to be that, um, you know, concrete. I thought it was a little excessive, singling out that. And then as far, so one page further, section, page five, section F, bullet A, the woman's attire. I didn't know if we're actually enforcing the dress code or not, and does that refer back to policy then seven three one two? I, I know, I got a little crazy here reading these, so my apologies.
Well, um.
So you're referencing D.
To your last comment, um, under that section F, um, you're talking about creating different expectations for individuals based on their perceived identities. Um, what those are, are those, those are, like, that part A is an example, dress codes that place more emphasis on a woman's attire. That's in regards to expectations and kinda stereotypical, so, um. Our dress code, for the most part, for, for students is, is in, uh, obviously, the dress code, it's, it's, but these policies are created because, um, you know, you go back to the gender identity, uh, gender equality. And basically, it's, it's saying that you need to be neutral in every aspect, every comment, every part of that, so, um, I don't think, I think those are just examples where, um, to your first comment about.
Yeah.
You know, that's, I think they're using those as examples of, of what not to do.
Okay. I didn't know if we need to be that, you know, descriptive.
Strike it?
Yeah.
Some of these policies, um, and hopefully that we never have to deal with that, do have some descriptors, more so now than ever before.
Sure.
Because you do run into those in the workplace.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, unfortunately. That's obvious to some people.
Right, sometimes, maybe that's why it's more descriptive.
Yes. But that would be inappropriate. Yeah.
Are, are we asking to strike that language, or what are we asking to do?
So there was a dress code reference, and I didn't know if we needed to reflect it.
I don't think we are, I'm just gonna strike that language, I don't think we're looking to strike that, I, I think it's more stereotypical language that's used as an example not to use, and I'm sure there's.
Number seven. So that would be understood, right? Oh, I think you took it out in the new one, I was looking at the old one. So now I think you're good.
Is, is there anything else that may stand out at all, Pete, you or Maria, in any of these? I think we're all okay, I'm wondering if we could make a motion to pass all four of these, would you feel comfortable with that tonight?
Sure, I'll make a motion to pass, uh.
So I'm sorry, there's five, I, I'm sorry.
Motion to pass policy thirty-four twenty, seventy-five fifty-one, sixty-one twenty-one, seventy-five fifty, and thirty-four twenty-one is ready.
Thanks, man, can I get a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Uh, favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, um, on to, uh, reports, Christine, I think you've, you've done your thing tonight.
Food for.
Yeah, you gave us a whole dinner for thought, uh, Jan, are you up for tonight?
Yeah, our design phase for our next capital project has begun, um, over the last few Mondays, we have met with different user groups, uh, namely, you know, specific teachers and departments to discuss what they would like to see in the upcoming renovations, um, equipment needs, you know, obviously in their individual spaces. It's going very well, um, you know, on that note, I want to let the board know that as we're in this design phase, we have altered some of the initial spaces we identified. Um, it, it's still the same spaces we're renovating, but we've moved some classrooms around, um, because sometimes we get in there and, and the room size is, is larger for, for, you know, um, a different classroom that we need. There were some issues with some exterior window light, we want all our classrooms to have at least some exterior window light, it's, it's required by NICED, um, and just the overall effectiveness, effectiveness in a, effectiveness in a specific location. So for example, um, we have, uh, moved the family consumer science over to the right side, moved art away from the woodshop area and made steam a part of that. Again, it's the same areas, but we're just relocating, um, the, the use of that space, um, the teachers are well aware of it, um, you know, they know what, you know, they know what they need, so we will continue to, um, to, you know, work on the design phase. We've also been meeting with the site architects and our coaches regarding our new outdoor athletic complex. We're gonna continue to work with SCI and LaChase, they're crunching our budget numbers, basically, we've kinda given them what we want to see, um, as far as, as turf, um, you know, the inner workings of the turf, all the way down to scoreboards, what we want everything to look like. And again, within the next few months, they'll be crunching some numbers and, um, we'll see kinda where our numbers fall as far as, um, our budget. I do wanna thank the board for your work this afternoon, uh, in diving deep into our long-range goals and strategic planning for our district. Um, as an update to the community, uh, we have taken the results of the surveys that were distributed, uh, last October, November, um, from our students, faculty, parents, community stakeholders, the administrators of the board. And we have reviewed the details and feedback that was provided to us. Last month, the administrators reviewed this information, uh, and the board was provided the executive summary of the feedback, and we are setting some short-term and long-term goals that will be identified and solidified, uh, by the end of the school year and widely shared with everybody, uh, moving forward. So again, thank you for the, for the work this afternoon, I thought it was very productive. And, uh, um, last week, I, I know everyone is aware, um, we had a very, uh, sad end to the week here in OA. Glenn Waldron, our longtime employee and beloved colleague, um, passed away, he was, he was certainly a good friend of mine, and I know he was a good friend to everybody here. Jordan had, um, kind of, uh, wrote a little, um, thing that he wanted me to say, uh, you know, Jordan Yeager, Director of Facilities, said, uh, Glenn started with us on July first in nineteen ninety-seven. He had twenty-six plus years in total, he truly loved working here and missed very little time. Even though he enjoyed many things away from the school, our department had to remind him constantly to use his vacation time. Um, Glenn how was ever, Glenn was however also looking forward to retirement, um, he would have been eligible to retire with thirty total years of service this coming October of twenty-four. He talked about traveling a lot, wanted to spend some time with his friends and family around the country. Glenn, you'll be missed, um, it was a pretty just quiet and awkward end of the week. I do wanna thank the Pembroke and Byram Burgeon School Districts for sending additional support staff to us last Friday, um, to help our students and faculty, um, you know, to create some comfort zones for us, so I appreciate that. And, um, Glenn, you're gonna be missed, buddy, mission, annoyingly. That's all I got.
Thanks, man. Amy?
So our high school teachers have, um, our high school special education teachers have, um, finished all of their interview for their students and did a very nice job of, um, identifying their student needs, um, in their IDPs this year. Currently working with middle school right now, uh, and so that means that our elementary are starting to write their plans and will be tackling those meetings starting in March.
Thanks, Amy. Connie?
Uh, updates, I think everybody on the board knows that we've been a computer-based district for three through eight testing for years, ever since I've been here, with the exception of science. And this year, there's two changes with science, the one which we've been talking about for the last couple of years, the new science assessment at the elementary level will be fifth grade, and the new assessment at, or the assessment in middle school will remain at eighth grade. So recently, we did simulations for the CBT, so it's a first simulation for the science, that went well, as actually was expected, because our kids are used to taking these tests on the computer. So we are full speed ahead, um, with our science investigations and the tests, and we're gonna give it our best shot this spring.
Right, why not? Thanks, Connie, Lynn?
Um, I know that we spent a lot of time talking about different updates and the phones, Cisco, and all the bells and whistles. I know that we spent a lot of time talking about different updates and the phones, Cisco and all the bells and whistles. And it really doesn't mean anything until you have an emergency. And the elementary had a student in crisis and I was with Lindsay. I didn't have time to get on a walkie talkie. But the way Rob has worked to figure out the system, when the phone was, from her office was called nine-one-one, everybody gets a blast. So my team knows exactly where the location is. Kathy Starkweather got the alert, so she came over to assist Lindsay. It is, is difficult of a situation it is to be in. Everybody just jumps in headfirst and just shows up. And that is really attributed to the different ways that we've been integrating our technology and just kind of being a step ahead. Years ago, it's my cellphone and no one knows that there's a crisis happening. So the response was a lot later. You know, they would see the ambulance pulling in. At that point, that just takes away that stress for us because we know we have somebody that can jump in and stand in. I would personally like to thank the ALBA team that responded in addition to our local fire department who came and they were there immediately to assist and do whatever we needed. So as awful as that situation is to be in, I just have a lot of, I'm thankful for because the, the response to media. And ten years ago, I didn't, I couldn't say that. So I'm very thankful for those improvements.
Thanks, thanks, Glenn. Was that Gretchen that came from?
Gretchen and her Osro came. They heard the call through the, the radio and they were just here to help out. So it was nice for Jordan to have somebody as a backup if things got worse.
Super thoughtful though.
It was great. Yep, it was all, all, everybody for, you know, Kathy coming over to anybody, you know, our custodians came, everybody came. So it's just nice to know that you're not an island.
Yeah. Thanks, Glenn. Uh, JC?
I said, two quick thank yous. One is right along the same lines with our Cisco phones. Mr. Litbold has come up with a really ingenious solution to our elementary school playground. It doesn't, isn't gonna end up costing us any additional money. We're gonna be able to put some of the Cisco phones that we currently have as extras in the vestibules going in from the playground. So any teacher on the playground, there's an emergency, they see something, they have a fully functional Cisco phone as soon as they thob into that building. So it's gonna be a great addition to our already great tech department or system. And really thank the outside the box, thinking about to come up with that solution. And then also the AED signage that you see up. Mr. Olson designed and created and installed it all himself. So really appreciate the efforts he took to really put the AED and arrows up so you can, there's, you can see where they are if you aren't familiar with the building. So two big thank yous, those are huge improvements for our facilities.
Thanks, JC. Rob, technology updates?
It's kind of fun to watch the auction sites on January thirty-first. At six P M, our first sixteen, fifteen panels will be, the prices, so you don't know what the numbers are.
Yeah.
Alright, so the batch number one contains seven panels, which are our oldest panels, which I would not put any money down because those are the ones you don't want. They have the most hours on them, they're various models.
You're not selling them.
Now they're not selling.
It is when there it goes, all they go.
The number right now, so that seven batch is, the current bid is five hundred and seventy dollars.
Say that again, was that seven hundred thousand or something?
There it is. Christine, you're welcome.
I write down numbers, I mean.
Keep it going, Rob, what else?
Lot number two.
I want a new chair.
We're counting on you.
Lot number two is a batch of eight Deusonic panels, all the same model. That's going for eight-ten right now. It's a little bit more. Now, in the future, we're not doing these batches of eight anymore because it takes a certain person to say, yes, I'll take eight of them.
Yeah.
Most people want one or two. So we said, we're gonna change it now and they're gonna be single units. I'm thinking it may be at least five hundred or so a unit as opposed to fifty bucks or a hundred bucks like we're seeing in lots of eight. So I think it'll be a smarter idea to do individually. And that will start in about two weeks. So we kind of told our people internally, if you're looking to get one of these panels, don't bet on the ones that, you know, the ones that are out there now, because the oldest ones first, that may actually have, you know, more problems with them. The next ones will have a few less hours on them, it'll be more advantageous to bid on, so.
Could you look one of those babies up in your living room?
You could. I have four HDMI inputs on them, so.
I can imagine your house right now.
The, the glass in the front of them is what makes it heavy. So, you know, a typical TV of that size you buy at Best Buy might be forty, fifty pounds. These are gonna be more like a hundred eighty, a hundred seventy pounds. So you have to have a stud wall. Sometimes you have leg supports, so they are. But they're good walls, they can endure four.
Then you can do it, huh? It's crazy. Thanks, Rob. Trina, Rob, anything to add?
Uh, no, we're just looking forward to the.
Adam.
It's okay, I think.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
I've lost fifty pounds since.
Sorry, Mr..
And my t-shirt. No, we're just looking forward to the February break and we appreciate the, we have good open lines of communication between the administration and ourselves, John and J C and et cetera. So that's good. And then we just want to say, on behalf of all of our OETA members, we're gonna greatly miss Glenn. He was a critical member of OA.
Thanks. Dan Bather?
Okay. How are we gonna be non-emotional? On behalf of CSCE, we lost one of the good ones. But I'm gonna miss him. It's funny how he retreats through and talk. Talk, talk. God bless him. Glenn was an amazing man. He had a heart of gold and would do anything for anyone. Glenn built his life on relationships. He was genuine, sincere, always made the time to connect with anyone who crossed his path. And that's a very rare gift. And when you meet someone like that, the impression is everlasting. I've been told we can be replaced. It's true. But we can never replace the man who made such a lasting impression. He'll live in our hearts forever. OA will feel his absence for many years to come. And the one thing I'm gonna miss when I get on the walkie, I need cleanup in the middle high school. There's water there or glass broke. I'll be there in a minute, Heather. That's what I miss, I really do. So we're gonna miss Glenn greatly. So thanks.
Yeah, he was just looking forward to retirement. Every time we're talking, he just wanna retire.
He was a good.
He was a good guy.
Uh, Paige?
Yeah, so kind of on a lighter note. Sports are heading into sectionals. Swimming already had their sectionals, they had a great season. Track has their sectionals this Saturday and basketball is moving into sectional season in the next few weeks as well. Some stuff going on in school, that we had the Valentine's Day dance this past weekend. There was the Health and Justice Academy visits this pa, in the past few weeks, which are, I think, great opportunities for juniors to have. There is, the close-up Washington trip is coming up soon in March. Math team had a great year as well. Some students got some individual awards, which I think is great. The musical is coming up quick, so that's exciting. And then we also have our high school wellness day coming up in March as well for the high school, which is another cool thing that I think we're able to do at our school. And then just kind of on the topic of Glenn as well, a lot of students are gonna miss him. I know he'd always say hi to me in the morning. A lot of students, he just said hi and even if you're having a bad day, just come over and just be, ask if everything's okay and he'd just kind of be there for you. And that's it.
Thanks, Ms. Tyler. On to new business. Be it resolved that items nine point two through nine point four be approved by a consent agenda? Can I get a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Nine, five. Bond resolution for the capital project twenty twenty-three. Be it resolved that the attached bond resolution authorizing a twenty-three million, sixty-five thousand capital project improvement project and the project plan and financing be approved? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jan. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Nine point six. CSCE contract be resolved, the new four-year CSCE contract be approved by the Board of Education, retroactive to July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-seven be approved? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
Second for Pete.
Yeah, there we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. On to communications. The board received a letter at the beginning of the month from the CSCE or a person from the CSCE questioning the length in which it's taken to, to go through this process. And they, that, within the letter, it asked for us to reach out and ask questions and be involved. And we have been all along throughout this process. And for the most part, this is a very typical process. It started in March and it's taken its course. Along the way, there's been some interactions that have been positive and some that have been negative. But it's been our intent to come up with a contract that was beneficial for the unit. The question within the letter was, why is it taking so long from the point in which we initially approved the tentative agreement back on December nineteenth to now? It's, the answer to that, and I want to make sure it's clear for the whole unit, is that, that was the tentative agreement. And we legally can't give the retro pay like we are today until we get the final approval, that, that final approval. And that's gotta come from the laborary special, relations specialist, and then it goes back and forth. And that's somewhat typical to have it go back and forth until that final agreement is made. So it can't legally be executed, executed until tonight when we vote on it. So there has been some time that's passed. And I'm, I'm not pointing fingers at the unit or anyone else. It's, it's just, it's taken time. It's been held by the LRS and gone back and forth a number of times until we were able to get to this moment. So it's my hope moving forward that we can work together positively and start communicating again in a way that's positive on, on, on both sides. This was not an easy process. We've had lots and lots of negotiation meetings here. You guys have met eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, it goes on and on and on and on, on both sides. And it's not unusual for a contract to come to impasse. And it's not unusual to take a while until language gets agreed upon. Because really, that's all you have at the end of the day, to go on on both sides, is the language. And until you agree, it's hard to move forward. So we have to do things in a way that's legal. And I did reach out to several business administrators outside of our district to determine whether or not what we were doing was okay, and it sure is. And here we are. So it's signed. Yay and yay. And we're gonna work together to enjoy each other for the next four years. And when we do it again, we hope that the process is, is a little bit quicker and maybe easier. I do appreciate Mrs. Younger, Dave, us being there the whole time and, and most of the time. And, and thank you Christine and John for putting in all the effort. This year was exceptionally hard because we had, I think, four contracts that we looked at, including yours. And that's, that's a lot. And hopefully we don't have to do that anytime soon or our next cycle. Because I think that that's, that's just, that's too much for everybody involved. So I just hope that that's somewhat clear, that rationale. But there's certain things that we have to do to make it legal and we'll move on. With that being said, I don't think we have too much at the round table. It's, and so, John, we talked about this when we set the agenda with Jackie about looking for nominations. And that, maybe I'm mistaken, but I always felt like these Bozey nominations came to us in the past. And then we as a board would approve or vote on the two there. I think this is just seeking at-large nominations from us, like within us. And I, I don't know where we wanna go with, with that as, as a board. If any one of us wants to investigate that role, I.
So really, it's, it's, if there's a, there's a community member. This is notification that there's three at-large members to be elected to the Genesee Valley Bozey's to a three-year term. And I would say if anybody is interested, they can call district office.
Yeah, we couldn't serve.
Correct. Correct. So if anybody is, yeah, if anybody in, in the Oakfield, Alabama community is interested, they can call district office. And we can provide them more information and.
Because I think that angle held that seat forever, right? For a very, very long time. Is he stepping down?
Yeah, a couple, was it last year?
Did he step down?
Yep, he did, you're right about that.
Okay. So if you know anybody out there that's looking for some G V board work, that's a place to go. Personnel. Be it resolved that items twelve point two through twelve point six be approved by a consent agenda? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Maria. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks. Thank, thank you, Nan. Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Twelve point seven, school monitor be resolved that Melinda Gilbert be appointed to the probationary position of school monitor to the elementary school cafeteria under the supervision of the elementary school principal effective February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Maria. Can I get a second?
Second.
Go Jackie this time. Thank you, Jackie. Any discussion?
Enjoy that job.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Melinda, for doing this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Twelve point eight, appointment of school, middle school monitor. Be it resolved that Rhea Hewitt be appointed to the probationary position of the school monitor in the elementary school cafeteria under the supervision of the elementary school principal effective February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Get a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Maria. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Nan. Any discussion?
Enjoy.
All in favor?
It's a good job.
Yeah, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
They'll be great.
Yeah.
There, you've got some good people in there, for sure.
Well, you have to have a lot of patience. Sometimes you're dealing with four-year-olds, sometimes you're dealing with a twelve-year-old. There's, there's a lot going on in the week, so.
I think they're both gonna be great.
Permanent recommendation, be it resolved that Janet Bates be made permanent employee effective March fifth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Nan, can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Nan. Any discussion? Congratulations, Janet. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Congrats.
Permanent recommendation, be it resolved that Kevin Hendershop be made a permanent employee effective March fifth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. You guys need a second, Nan?
You got it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Closing remarks. We're gonna do a closing remarks real quick and then go on to the session. Pete, start off with you, Jan.
I always like it when we have a presentation from a committee or a group that we've seen. Guess when you've been, you've seen the beginnings form, and then just with the, the whole support staff that did the presentation. It's great to see something like that grow within our district and what really started off small and is such a great program. And I think it's great to, to see that, you know, after you've sat here long enough. It's great. And I just hope that, you know, everything else continues to grow in, in our district. I know we have some tough decisions to make up here in the next couple of months with budgets and stuff. I hope that everybody can remember that not, everybody's gonna get everything they want, right? So somebody's gotta give and that, you know, I don't think any of these decisions are taken lightly on either side. And I hope that everybody remembers that and we get through it okay.
Thanks, Pete. Nan?
So coming up on seven months of being a part of this board, I am very grateful and thankful for being here and representing some of the community and. thankful for being here and representing some of the community and being a parent as well. I've had the opportunity to do a lot of diving in to board stuff. I've had the opportunity to see Senator Borello and hear about what this budget is going to entail and what the consequences of Ms. Poco could essentially be. And it's scary to hear as a community member, as a parent, as an educator for, for you guys. And I, I hope that the government can make these decisions and really push education more so than any other agenda item that they have planned. So I know that there's a lot of people out there fighting for this and really pushing for the education budget to be back into play. There was quite a few people at the last presentation that I saw and I think it was really hopeful in listening to that voices will be heard and the scary situation that our board is in, our school district is in, we don't want to lose anything at this point. We have such an awesome team, these presentations that we hear on a monthly basis, they're phenomenal. And I couldn't imagine my kids coming into school without Officer Alejandro at that front door. So that would be heart-wrenching. I, I'm really hopeful for this budget coming up. I, I know it sounds scary to the community members and to the team here, but listening to all the support, I, I think we're going to be in a good situation. I'm going to be hopeful for that.
Thanks, and thank you for going, Natalie. I really appreciate you going and then the board back. Maria?
Yeah, I'll echo what Natalie says. I'm a woman of faith. I'm going to pray on that, that she recognizes we can't do this work without human beings. So we got to have you here. Just real quick, Glenn Waldron, the man, he, so Glenn's been here forever, we all know that. When I was in school, I was that, you know that kid that's always here late and you're like, is someone coming for you? That was me. I was that kid every day after practice and I would be sitting in the vestibule and Glenn would come over solo, is your mom coming or not coming? And every day he would bring his lunch pail down. Every day he would share his food with me because, you know, it's five, six o'clock at night, I'm starving by that point. That's just the type of guy he was. And, you know, I posted something on social media, we had such a special relationship, my family and his family, and so many people chimed in about their special relationship. I was a little jealous for a minute. I was like, wait a minute, you had that rela, everybody had that relationship with him. He knew everybody's situation. He just loved everyone with every, every fiber of his being. So, you know, I'll leave you with this, just be like Glenn. Love like Glenn. His legacy will live on and the only great thing about Glenn being up there looking down is he can watch over us all, all of his kids, he would call us at the same time. So I'm sorry for everyone, everyone's loss, but be like Glenn.
Thanks, Maria. Nat?
So I read an interesting article in the Bataven a month and a half ago. We didn't do closing remarks a month ago, so I'm a little late on this, but.
Sorry. That's probably my fault.
A student from Oakfield was recognized in Arizona Project and Leah Pakka did the article, contributed to it with Bataven. I don't, I don't know the student, Kempton Benjamins is his name. Just wanted to recognize him and the art department, all the enthusiasm that Leah shows, you know, for that and his work.
That's pretty cool. What was it, Nat? Do you know what it is?
Well, it's a, you know, of course, I do, I do, I do a pumpkin, yeah, right? So it is a pumpkin under a glowy moon, something like that. It's a, it's a pretty cool deal. It's the first time, I think, I've said, you know, Oakfield was in this, so.
Ah, cool.
Congratulations, Dan.
Thanks, man. Jackie?
Love the presentations always. Christine, very full of a lot of knowledge. Info, thank you. I know it's a lot of hard work and you spend a lot of hours, so I appreciate your, your efforts and your attendance to all this, so thank you. The mental health presentation, so grateful for that team and it's just watching them, how they interact with each other and present themselves and present to us. It's, it's a lot of cohesiveness, a lot of, a lot of collaboration. I think that's an example of what I would love to, I mean, I do see a lot of that happening. I think that's just a really good representation of some really positive correlations happening and seeing positive impacts for our students, which is why we're all here at the end of the day. I really liked that and it was really refreshing to see that and I'm, I'm hopeful that that just kind of bleeds through and I think, I think it does in a lot of areas. And as far as the hard conversations and the difficult situations, we've been in them before and I, I wouldn't want to be with anybody else to do that. I think we have a great board and a great admin team, great faculty, staff, community. So I think it's really, really going to be good at some point. I'm, I'm positive and fruitful and hopefully this will all come together, but I think it's doable, so I'm hopeful.
Thanks, Jackie.
And respects to Glenn, I'm sorry, respects to Glenn and his family. I've known his family for a long time, so again, we'll miss him and respects to his family and friends.
Thanks, Jackie. Like John said earlier tonight, we reviewed the survey and I think it wasn't easy to look at some of the reporting back. And I think all groups are representative and we have work to do to acknowledge these groups in a way that makes them feel valued and move forward in a way where we have some goals that we can all see together, not just one person's goals, but all of ours. And that's going to, like Jackie said, be very hard. It's not just budget that we're concerned about, it's, it's, it's how we function in a day-to-day way. Is this a place you want to be in? And we hope it's yes. And we may have some room to get there. So we'd like to thank everybody that took the time to do the survey because the feedback was really, you know, important for us and eye-opening in some instances. And for, for, for me, I wish Glenn's family the absolute best. I was just a year, I graduated in 97, but whenever I would see him, he'd ask about my brother Derek and my sister Sarah and he'd always remind me of what years they graduated and it was always surprising to me. He, he was a guy that loved to talk and he was always, he goes, hey, Mr. President, I've got something you might want to know. He was right, I always did want to know, but he was just an all-around nice guy. With that being said, my hair goes out to the building because it's not easy, especially a guy like Glenn, like Glenn has been there for so long. I'd like to enter executive session. Can I get a motion to go into executive session? For discussing the purposes of a particular, let me get this right because now I'm, be it resolved, the Board of Education will enter executive session at 8:13 for the purposes of discussing the employment history of a particular person.
I'll sign with that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?